For the pledge of allegiance.
For the pledge of allegiance. I plead to the Father, of the United States of America, and to everyone who wishes to sing this one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Please have the reading of the mission and vision statement.
Mission statement, Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Richmond Community Schools is a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives, choice, purpose, and service.
Thank you. Moving on to celebrations, Dr. A.
President, figure, trustees, I'm going to ask that Mr. Sam Pritchard, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary and Secondary Education at home with Mrs. Haynes, will be here, join us this evening as the, oh yeah, tonight's.
I've got the script.
Good evening. Tonight, we are pleased to have several key members of our educational leadership team present. We are honored to have them join us this evening as we celebrate our students' outstanding standardized testing achievement success and recognize the vital role, the vital role these educators played in supporting our students' accomplishments. So Mr. and Mrs., Mr. Richard and Mrs. Markworth will now introduce those with us tonight.
We can start by having all elementary principals and staff.
Except my side. That's right. They can hear you, but thank you, you're not. All right, will you guys please?
I'm done for service, I guess.
Rebecca Lofe is instructional coach, Fairview.
Amy Manosworth, literacy cadre coach at Fairview.
Nicole Vanderburg, principal of Dale.
Sean Thrasher, literacy cadre coach at Dale.
Kristen Ross, literacy coach at Star Elementary.
Sarah Vance, instructional coach at Star.
Stephanie Hoover, principal of Star Elementary.
Jean Kirk, district instructional coach.
Rebecca Hurrell, downtown principal.
And we also would have been joined, but unfortunately our schedule did not afford for Ms. Slavitt from Preston to also be a part.
Yes, yes.
No, sorry, questions?
So we just wanted to take a minute to thank and celebrate this team for the amazing, amazing growth, double the state average in our I read scores and of course we showed some great growth in I learned scores, third and fourth grade, not where we want to be of course, but we're going to continue to keep working on that. So we want to celebrate the work that's been put in by our leaders at each building alongside of our instructional coaches and our literacy cadre coaches led by Ms. Kirk's district wife.
Questions?
I would just say thank you. As a former teacher, I mean, I see the work that administrators and coaches and instructional coaches put in. You guys are so valuable to our teachers, to our students, so thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you all so much, we do really appreciate it, I see it in my kiddos every day, so we, I don't know how hard it is, I mean, I think we all do, but you know, kudos to you all, you put in the work, it's showing and we appreciate it.
As you all heard me say time and again, I love you to death, love our faculty and staff, our teachers, that you all so selflessly serve. Ms. Kirk, you're not aware, but in my student minutes update, I typically will include not only your Wednesday correspondence content, but Mrs. Markworth as well as Mr. Richard also include many of the outstanding things that you all are doing in your respective schools. So continue to keep up the great work, we know that we have quite a bit of foundation to continue to build upon, but the selfless service and the efforts that you all are putting in are so well appreciated, so again, thank you. Not to be long, we didn't say, we didn't say. We'll do secondary.
Can you guys see it right here? They seem to just, just get a photo of Ms. Kirk right back there. Thank you. All right, can I give you a three?
It is, it is my pleasure to introduce the secondary leadership team and their instructional, instructional crew, so I will let them introduce themselves and their role within the district.
I'm Laura Brazel, I'm the principal of test intermediate, my coach Jessica Creach was unable to be here tonight.
Celeste Johnson, instructional coach at Richmond High School.
Ray Wolbe, principal of Richmond High School.
I'm Stephen Hensley, I'm the principal of the Haver Program Building.
Crystal Hoover, principal of Dennis.
TC Kluusman, instructional coach at Dennis.
Now we're missing one member, and that's Mrs. Hobbs, who is the principal at the Baxter Building, she cannot be here with us tonight, this evening either, but this group comes in in the middle of July and starts getting everything ready, making sure the schedules are set, onboarding new staff members, onboarding new administrators, Mr. Woodruff, you could come on up. He's one of those new administrators, Mrs. Brazel also on boarded, Mr. Hensley's in the process, they're still trying to, trying to get some folks, so these are the driving force of the instructional programs we offer at the middle, the middle ages, the middle ages, so we greatly appreciate all of your hard work, so anything that, middle aged kids, so we appreciate you guys, you guys do bring to table for our little schoolers and high school kids. Anything from your group? And I know you have something to say, Mrs. Wolbe. They have, there's growth across the board at our level as well, you mentioned the I read scores, but then it's middle school saw growth in all areas, tests just like across the state test saw improvements in their math scores, reading stayed about the same, but math scores did, but I know Miss Johnson's been working, just Kluusman, on the, we integrated, obviously we brought new curriculums over with reading and math, or sorry, reading and science, so we appreciate all the, we know hard, they're, much, much appreciated.
Questions? Since I didn't get to address the first group, I just, on top of everything else, I just really appreciate the extra focus intentionality of the math, science, I mean, it, it, it's an extra ask, and, and it, to include that and then have results with everything else you guys are doing is super impressive, and I thank you all, both groups, I'm sorry for the, they, I didn't get to speak earlier, but it means a lot for our kids, thank you.
Definitely appreciate as well, you know, I always think about when you're trying to learn something and teach something at the same time, with all the new curriculum is always hard and challenging, but you know, you guys put in so much work and appreciate you too, I see a lot of you.
Just with you all, not long ago, and just as I expressed, the elementary principals and structural coaches and others, the intentionality that you all are placing in your, your, your focus community field and guidance, it's, again, continue to pay dividends, and so while, as was alluded to, we have some work to do, the percentage growth that you all have made at the secondary level, which we know is very difficult, it's quite impressive, so continue to do what you do, and we're definitely ready to get, thank you.
Video.
Next, we have public commentary, and we have a few speakers, so those who wish to comment at this evening's board meeting, the maximum time to speak is five minutes, please keep your comments backspace and within the time permitted. Comments are not to be personally directed or abusive. Comments recognizing the work of staff and students are always welcome, however, critical remarks concerning specific personnel or students are to be made through the complaint process available in policy 9130. School board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting, but the board president will send you a personal follow-up email. Please state your name before speaking.
Our first person speaking is Roger Weiss.
Good evening. My name is Rod Weiss, born and raised here, graduate of 79.
Sorry. I'm trying to put my phone.
Okay. I have, most mine is concerning on the financial side, on how the board has been improving administrative salaries. I know that there's, you may be rescinding Curtis' contract, I'll get to that in a second. I have a concern on a, the new school board member, his wife being hired as administrator, and if I'm not mistaken, I may not be exactly on everything, but if I'm not mistaken, all those administrative positions was a vote of six oh, which means that position should have been voted out because he should have recused himself from voting his wife to become the administrator, if I'm not mistaken. She ended up getting a $30,000 increase from the principal to running the Head Start, I believe. Let's move on to the high school area. Our head principal, Ray Wolbe, this is all public knowledge, it's $119,000 a year. We used to have four assistant principals, but now I've been corrected, there's only three, because Mr. Amix is in charge of the, of the career or whatever department, but we have three other assistant principals making between 84 to, let's say, the low 90s. My question is, and none of this includes benefits, my question is, why do we need that many assistant principals? Let's move on to the athletic director, who makes $108,000 a year. The previous athletic director only made 96, and that was just a little over a year and a half ago. My question is, what does the, please explain to me and the taxpayers, what did the new athletic director bring to earn $12,000 more a year? I haven't seen it. The middle school athletic director earns 109,000, that's his only position. Absurd. Why this board signed the contract for him for five years is absurd. The high school assistant athletic director, yes, she teaches three classes, I believe, so she earns 96,000. All these numbers I'm giving you is without benefits, so let's say her pay as a teacher is probably 70, 72,000, because longevity. Then you have the secretary who's earning $57,000. All that totals up to $370,000 before benefits coming out of the athletic department, or we have to fund. Now, let's go on to our current superintendent, I believe he is making this school year 192,000 plus benefits. What have we got? Voted no confidence from the teachers, won't come in five days like he was instructed to back in the summer, I can verify that. Those test scores of all six county schools, even though they have come up, but were still the lowest, still dealing with title, excuse me, Title IX, which I believe the report is out, and I would like to see that made public ASAP. Now we also have a lawsuit to bully that supposedly has been going on for two years and it's just been brought to light through the lawsuit. Charles Elementary last year had two third grade classes with 28 students in each. Those kids moved to fourth grade.
One minute.
Thank you. Now, those two teachers overwhelmed again, and now they're running, trying to get another classroom and a teacher for the fourth grade. Common sense, would have told us last year that that class was going to be gone, fourth grade, why wasn't it planned in advance instead of trying to do it a month into the school year? In other words, this poor leadership and management personnel. I won't have time to get into the, the three football players that was ejected or referee's contracts being revoked, I'm pretty certain I won't have time on that unless I got 30 seconds.
10 seconds.
No, don't have time. Okay. Thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Next, we have Tammy Miller.
Hello, thanks for having me. So my name is Tammy Miller, and I'm not part of the Richmond School District, but I do live in Wayne County in economy. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Head Start contract, and I know that no one here actually has a contract until October, but there are changes being made, like the Hagerstown, buildings closed, Centerville's closed, and I know that those are probably happening because of enrollment numbers, but we're out there, we're trying to get our kids enrolled and it's just not working, I don't know what's going on. I'm glad somebody else has taken over the contract, because I think things will get better, I'm having confidence that's going to happen. I'm just asking that not a lot of changes be made until we can get our kids enrolled, it's been hard, I've been trying since May, so that's basically what I wanted to say. I did talk to the, going to be the new director, and she was helpful, she couldn't give me a lot of information, of course, because you don't have the contract yet, and I did leave a couple of voicemails for Dr. Wright, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to even listen to those yet, but I thought maybe this would be a place to come and ask. We're out there, there's a lot of people in the county, and it's going to be really hard to be able to drive our kids to Richmond, they are in math, this is an infant-based program, so they're already struggling, so it's not going to help improve enrollment numbers if we close those buildings indefinitely, so that's basically all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Our next, our last is Jason Block.
Good evening, I'm Jason Block, I have two very different topics that I'd like to comment on. First, as a community member who is active in advocating for the importance of reading, especially in our youngest ones, I want to say thank you to the teachers, administrators, and support across the district that have invested to make the results that we've seen this past year a reality, so thank you. And on that very different topic, as a parent, I request the board ensure key terms are defined and policies being considered. On tonight's agenda, I was unable to find a definition for habitually absent, even though it requires the superintendent to take specific action.
Okay. Moving on, up next, we will be moving to our consent items, so that is item 4.01 through 4.07, which includes our human resource and the benefit. I move to approve consent items 4.01 through 4.7, including the benefit.
Sir.
That was a motion by member Brunton, and a second by member Stevens, any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Moving to action items, first, we have donations, item 5.01. I'm going to approve donations, item 5.01.
Second.
Some motion by member Brunton, and a second by member Aloriaga, any questions or comments?
Just like to say thank you to the people that are donating, it's much appreciated, we'll definitely put it to good use.
Yep, our donations totaled $5,924.55 this period, so definitely always a thank you to the community. All those in favor, vote with saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Item 5.02, which is salary schedule and benefit packages for the Head Start program.
We approve action item 5.02, new salary schedule and benefits package for history employees.
Second.
Some motion by member Weber, and a second by member Stevens, any questions or comments? So I just want to say this, you know, really helps outline all of the incoming positions for Head Start, making an comprehensive salary schedule and benefit package for them. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Moving to policy review update, up first, we have item 6.01, which is policy 5111, which is a revised policy. It's a long title, special update, determination of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement in the corporation, proof of Indiana residency first.
We've moved policy 6.01, or item 6.01, policy 5111, to the second meeting.
Second.
Some motion by member Weber, and a second by member Stevens, any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Vote passes six to zero. Next on the list is item 6.02, which is policy 5200. Next on the list is item six point oh two, which is policy fifty-two hundred, which is determination... Sorry.
Especially for the...
What? Sir, I am... No followers today. Sorry, revised policy, attendance first reading.
President, I move to make a motion that we move policy fifty-two hundred. The revised policy, special update regarding attendance, to the second reading.
Seven.
Some motion by member Stevens, and a second by member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments?
We heard something in regards to the term habitual truancy from one of our citizens, and I would hope that we can get clarification of that prior to approving this policy, so that it's clearly stated as to what that term is.
Maybe if we can move this back, I mean, I think it may go on to second reading, but move it also to our coming up policy meeting, and Stacy can add that to her agenda. It's not as said fifty-two hundred, so that we can relook at that terminology to see if that needs to be defined further.
And it's like, is there a... Is there actually a term? I feel like the state has defined habitual somewhere else, potentially, like what that means.
But there's so many Indiana codes referencing the name of it from the Ola, there's twenty of them, so I don't know one of those, but maybe having it in the policies of the House could be helpful, but I agree.
I think that makes sense.
I agree.
I would, I mean, I would extend for tabling rather than moving it on, so maybe with notes.
Yes, sir.
I understand.
Well, it will... So, our next policy meeting is nine.
But we can have these go to twenty readings if we want to. It just says that, it's just saying that we acknowledge that we needed to go back, and we're not approving it, it's just continuing on as a reading, even if we get more board meetings before our next policy meeting.
Wait, right?
Yes.
So, okay. Wait, note it, John, Mr. Weber. Okay, all those in favor of moving to second reading, which is also bringing it to the policy meeting on the ninth. Vote by saying aye. Aye. Opposed nay? Vote passes five to one. Item six point oh three, which is policy fifty-two twenty-three, release time for religious instruction, first reading.
I make motion that we move policy fifty-two twenty-three, revised policy and the update for release time for religious instruction to second reading.
Second.
Some motion by member Stevens, and a second by member Weber. Any questions or comments?
Just that, I know we say it almost every time, but we review these policies once a month, so this has been, we've gone through all these, obviously, we may have missed it. The truancy definition, or may need some more work there, but we do spend quite a bit of time on this policy.
All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Vote passes six to zero. Item six point oh four, policy fifty-six hundred, which is student discipline, first reading.
I make motion that we move policy fifty-six hundred, student discipline to the second reading.
Second.
Some motion by member Stevens, and a second by member Aloriaga. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Vote passes six to zero. Okay. Up next, president's update, and it's such a short meeting. I don't have an update. But before I go to preview upcoming meetings, I just want to open the board for open forum, if anyone has any items to bring up, discuss concerns, comments.
I may have asked this before, but when we have policy meetings, are those, can this be done remotely?
Yeah, it's fair. No, it's just next night.
Any more that becomes inundated, but I feel still, this is one of the three things that we do as board, is one of the three things that we do as a board, and I would like to attend, and I'm sure.
I think we talked about last meeting about maybe just always including, particularly for us, because, you know, we all work full-time, and we try to get them in and make it easy, but, you know, it's too difficult. But, you know, I know we all want to be there, enjoy, and even if we're listening in, so.
And I guess just a reminder that it's a hope to the public, as John has mentioned that, but also, whenever we are looking at a certain policy, we try to bring in, you know, who it affects, so that it affects teachers, and, you know, or admin, or, you know, someone in the community, or anywhere that we can get insight, along with the Ola, which is an educational partner that we use, who keeps, and keeps us up on current Indiana code, and, you know, making sure we're moving with the laws and the facts as well.
Any others?
I just wanted to bring up the Morrison Reeves Library. I know that's been kind of in the news lately, as they are pursuing a complete renovation of their building. I think they are a one-partner to us, not only for the students of Richmond and Wayne County, but I think they benefit immensely from the programming, from the services they offer, I think the community, adults, if we talk about education, and if we are the leading voice of education in Richmond, I think we can certainly speak to the value for not only the students, but adults in the community. And then, finally, I just think we're gonna add hundreds of apartments downtown, and when you think of the downtown corridor, and think of that new, newly renovated facility within walking distance to considerably hundreds of new families, I think what a boom that is to our community. And so, I know myself, I'm extremely happy that that process is happening. I don't think the library's had a bond since the early nineties, I believe. And while I understand maybe tax dollars is a difficult business, I am supportive of that, and I just wanted to make that statement.
I'd like to occur with John, and I agree with John on that, that it's a vital, integral part of our city. And I think, just going back to my kids, as they were growing up, they would go to the library, my mom would take them to the library, and start that early childhood reading and programs that they had, and go into a chili cook-off. When I was at East, we used the Morrison Reeves Library for one of our conferences, and I'm pretty sure Richmond Community Schools uses it, and most of our kids use it, and it's an integral part of our city. I don't believe Richmond Downtown would be complete without a Morrison Reeves Library, so I would have to agree with, we have to figure out a way, and I think we have to communicate in the politics and in the ring of things. But I think if we communicate, come together as a community, because that's what we are, we are a community, I think overall, we'll see the results that we want to see, and I think people will be happy with that.
No, I definitely agree. I think, we were just talking about this not too long ago, about the library still smells the same, not in a bad way, just you walk in there, it's just nostalgia, and those, really, probably any community, no libraries, or it's where you went. I did say, this will be yesterday, that it should be required that our kids still have to go through the card catalog. That should be a real skill. But, yeah, you know, just trying to support them, I know the, without getting the weeds of tax implications, and, you know, how that potentially affects us, it's still the right thing to do, to support Morrison Reeves, and actually, really, our kids, because I used to love to read books when I was supposed to be there, but I, I mean, it's, getting kids around that is so important.
I was there several years ago, I think cropping out books for the book sale, and all of a sudden, the buses rolled up, and I think all our third graders rolled in the building, and I'm like, and I saw one of the administrators, and I said, what's going on? It's the library there. And he was just there to engage and make sure things work smoothly and whatnot, but it was, I mean, it's a, it's a real community asset, it really is, and it's so helpful to our students.
It's more...
I'm just gonna, I'd say that also, our students, definitely, as a teacher, I would take my kids to, take the kids to the library every year. Every year, I visit the Morrison Reeves Library. I was there yesterday, thinking of a book, I'm a patron, and still use the library. There were a lot of people at the library, not just for the books, but the activities, the classes, the technology, the computer lab, I mean, they have videos, I mean, they have, people were checking out, I mean, it's busy, it's a busy place, but also our parents of our students, and that's, you know, impacts our parents, who then, you know, passes on to our students, so I agree, the community needs it.
And our teachers really, they do utilize the library, you know, I know, hipper teachers, they're taking the kids down, they're getting their library card there, which is super exciting for the kids, too, like, they've, they've got something, you know, maybe it's more digital than actual, the card these days, things a little key-tack, but, you know, it's like getting them started, so.
It is going beyond, the last number of years, going beyond more than just the Center for Reading Learning, but also a true community partnership. I know that I attend meetings there about three times a month, and I go there a couple of times a month with grandkids on Fridays, but then the Richmond Community Orchestra and other musical groups, especially in the fall and the winter time, we'll hold concerts there, programming there. So, it's not just about the reading of the books, but also very much a partnership with the arts across the board for the community, and I think it's a vital, vital partner in the history of Richmond, past, present, and in the future.
Yeah, I know, that was one thing I was really impressed, moving from a much larger area to Richmond. I was pretty impressed when we moved here a few years back with the library itself, but expected something much smaller and whatnot, especially coming from an area in Johnson County that had a very, very solid library system, very nice library system. Very pleasantly impressed with what we've got, so I'm sure love to see that be maintained and bettered into the future in many years.
Any other, right? Sir?
Good point, John.
But any other items for open forum? So, moving to... Upcoming, preview of upcoming meetings and events. Next week is homecoming week, it's super early this year, I'm not sure why, but I kind of like it, I don't know. It's, I feel like it's closer to the beginning of school, I don't know, okay, Mr. Loriaga does not, but I'm sure...
I like his little wrist, full form.
Administrators and teachers might be stressed, but, you know.
The weather stayed tall, I think that's the question.
Right.
I hope so.
But our, our homecoming parade is Wednesday, next Wednesday, September third, at six P M. There is a rain date, which is Thursday, September fourth, so hopefully, we keep the rain off. The next special policy meeting is Wednesday, September ninth, at nine A M.
It's Wednesday, Tuesday.
It's Thursday, but it's Thursday, I mean, it's Tuesday.
It's Thursday.
Sorry, just checking. No, it's a Tuesday. It is a Tuesday. It's a Tuesday. Okay. Trying to move. We did, sorry. So, it's Tuesday, September ninth, at nine A M. It is an hour earlier, here in this boardroom, it's open to the public. And then the next regular org meeting is Wednesday, September tenth, at five-thirty here in this boardroom. So, moving on to... Dermot and Bowery, Dr. Wright.
President, papering trustees, and I ask that this is Richard Hazel Baker, Director of Student Support Services, medication, rejoins for the savings.
Well, I just want to brag a little bit about our family liaisons that we have in our buildings right now. They have passed out over one thousand items to our students in our buildings right now, so we are very, very thankful for the collaboration that they have, that they're helping with community partners that we have in our district, and our kiddos and families are getting that needed support. I'm also happy to announce that we will soon be opening our RCS care closet, and it'll be located in the high school, in the basement, and we'll have, that's where we will house the coats, shoes, school supplies, things like that, so people will request items through their family liaisons, and then we'll be able to have those items taken to their schools. And so, we have a partner with Richmond High School Applied Skills Class, they will be helping run that store, so they'll be taking the requests and taking the orders, and helping us, helping us with that room. So, Ms. Avery, Ms. Marion Avery, Richmond High School, is very pleased and happy to partner with us, and just, it's gonna be a win-win. So, again, I'm getting that area cleaned up right now, organized with some of our donations that we've been receiving, but, again, the community partnerships have been phenomenal so far. Thank you.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question? So, if people want to donate, should they go through the liaison with the school? Can they contact?
I would say whatever the most, what most convenient, and again, we would love new items, or maybe gently used, not used, used. But, again, we're still partnering with Reed Health, the shoes, the shoes have not arrived yet, so a lot of families are asking for shoes, so we, we are working to try to see about getting some gently-used shoes to students right now, and then looking at maybe getting those new shoes to them later, once those arrive. So, again, any, any supplies, we're also looking at snacks, also, healthy snacks, need a, you know, full grain, maybe some snacks, not, not a lot of sugar items, but, so keep the candy on the, keep that for trick-or-treat, we would rather not have the candy brought to the school, but, well, and my son would say, no, we don't have the candy at the school, but again, yeah, we'll take those donations anyway. They can call here at the administration building, which is nine seven three, 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 zero, zero, or they can contact any Richmond school, and we'll get those donations taken care of here.
And I would love to see, too, if you are running short, like, to put a blast out, I'm sure you, you know.
Well, just today, we've donated some items today, so we got some ice kits today to help with some families that may need some help, and then we also got headphones, you know, different items today, so just, the school supplies are still coming in, we have a lot of school supplies, again, for next year, but it's just, again, that we, Ms. Wolfie and her crew over at the high school, allowing us to have the RCS care closet. That's great. Thank you.
Any other items?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Main reader?